Welcome to T Lee's Tea where all eyes are hopefully on me. Rest in peace, Pop. But I wanna thank y'all for coming in. We're finally getting this ball rolling. Your girl is back and I'm glad y'all tuned in. I was thinking like, what should I say? Like, everybody's like, family, fam. I'm from the south, so when I say y'all, that means y'all included. That means y'all them, y'all them boys. That's what they mean. If I say y'all, y'all included. So where, where we gonna start? Okay, y'all. I know everybody, everybody is like making meme after meme and tweets after tweets about Carly Russell. And I don't feel bad for my prayers and uh asking people to pray for Carly. Cause she still needs prayers right now. But I couldn't help but, it's like, my husband and I, we do this little thing. Like, uh if something happens, we'll like roleplay. Like, you know how you watch the little skits on TikTok and stuff. So we'll roleplay and we'll play the persons, right? And I was like, I just couldn't imagine, I could just see her mom like, Carly, sit your A down. Sit down somewhere, Carly. How you done embarrassed us in front of all these people? We out here on the news, we out here praying for you. Carly! You done lost your mind? You know we raised you better than that, Carly? And she probably was like, ain't nobody tell y'all to uh get on the news? That's not funny, but that is like crazy. That means a lot was going on there. A lot was going on there. And I was like her age, she was twenty-five years old. And at twenty-five, um and I was making some good decisions at twenty-five. But I do remember uh when I wasn't making um any good decisions. Not just to say that I'm saying because she's young, she gets a pass. I'm saying Carly, learn from this lesson. I know you ain't gonna never do this again. I know you ain't gonna never do this again. But another thing, on this show, I have to say allegedly also, because I've seen some things happen to some people for saying things and baby. Keep moving forward, okay. So, I'm gonna say allegedly. If this had anything to do with a dude. If it had anything to do with a guy. This is just a little nugget. Don't chase after a man. A man will chase after a woman who, whom he wants. Never put your position, yourself in a position. And this is for a man or a woman. If you know you're a good person and you're good to this person, and this person chooses somebody else. I don't know if that was the case or if I'm far off the track, but this is a learning, this is something that's, that's valuable. Don't chase after that person. If you know your worth, you know, and you know who you are, you shouldn't chase after a person. That person will realize if it's something, you love something, you let it go. If it come back right, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, it should've been right from the beginning. But it's a lot of stuff going on these days. And it's like, the rules have changed and like, uh how people interact, how people date, how people do stuff, you know, you still got some people that, um you still have some people that believe in traditional values, but these days, you got a lot of things going on with society and people. So, you love something, you let it go. Don't chase after no man, and don't chase after a woman if she don't want you. God showed me something the other day. It was like, sometimes you think you know what you want and you think that you've chosen the right things. And then you find out that, that's why I didn't want you to have that. Uh that's why I didn't want you to be with that person. He'll reveal it to you later on. So, as being a young woman, you got your life ahead of you. You in the spotlight now. You might as well put that wig back on. No, don't put that wig back on. Go get you a new wig, cause you bout to be on TV, you bout to be everywhere, and just look cute. Heck, tell them, uh, well, this was the biggest prank you ever saw. Yeah, I'm the biggest prankster. Cause people be doing some crazy stuff, but, ooh. Everybody was worried, cause they thought a baby was involved, not just you. And next time, God forbid, you cry wolf. It might be a time where you need some help. But learn from this, let this be a learning experience and grow from this. I know a lot of young people, a lot of young people out there right now, y'all are making bad decisions and even older people. But it's like this, nobody's life was lost. Thank God you've made it home to your family. I'd rather see you embarrassed or ashamed for your actions than in a grave somewhere. So I don't have no, nothing but love for you, baby. So, continue on with your aspirations and dreams. And don't let nothing or nobody get you out your character. Moving right along, moving right along. I got two things, two more topics that I wanna cover, but I don't know how I wanna put it, which one I wanna talk about first. Oh, can I just throw in a bonus one? This is completely not supposed to be in the mix. But I'm gonna go ahead and put it in the mix. Like, I, the shows, I've been watching Netflix lately. But the shows that I really do like, I used to like reality shows, I like reality shows. And my husband's not really big on those, so usually when we're watching the TV together, it's like, um we'll agree on something to watch, but it don't be what I be wanting to watch. And I'm pretty busy, so I don't have a lot of time just to sit behind the TV. And, um, anyhow. So, my show that I love to watch was Love and Hip Hop. Hey, y'all from, um, the cast of Love and Hip Hop. Y'all have really, Ms. Mona Scott, she really did put y'all, a group of people on the map. And, but I think personally, that with reality TV, me watching it so long, when you have couples in relationships and marriages, I don't know if it looks like it's extra bad on the TV or that's just how it is nowadays. Cause it could just be very much that's how it is nowadays. But what I've seen is, and what really hurt me is how easily people throw their marriages away. And when I say easily, I know some circumstances, like if it's like a, you know, a life of death or it's something like that situation. Of course, by all means. But sometimes, um, just from watching, I don't know all, we're just watching the show. So I don't know all that's going on in the relationships. We only know that what we see. And I said, I wasn't even gonna be talking about no celebrity stuff. Look at me, didn't jump in. I didn't, I ain't even got the tea ready. I'm all in the tea. Make sure you like, subscribe, and join your girl. We're gonna have a lot of things to talk about over this course of many, many, many years, y'all. So stay tuned in, comment, like, share, and subscribe. Moving right along, so I've been looking at this lately and it's like, I, I, I really do think that I saw like some couples that, uh really did love each other. And I believe sometimes that you and that person that you're married to, it's like y'all have that covenant with God. And all the extra people that's around, those are just their opinions. They haven't heard all of your conversations, just like we haven't seen all of the show, like all, all of the things behind the cameras. But I've seen a couple that seemed like they gen- genuinely loved each other. And it looked like it was a whole bunch of exterior things going on. And it was like their marriage seemed like it was really under attack. And knowing personally, or you know, knowing, it's like, it's already like a covenant, it's already like the enemy wants it doomed from the beginning, you know? If it comes to kill, steal, and destroy, he ain't all about that. Not no marriage. So, it's a lot of temptation, a lot of things going on these days. And it seems like it's even more out than it was years past. Even like when we watched some of the awards and stuff like that, some of the stuff seemed like, dang. Like, you wouldn't even imagine that it would just be like all out there. Like, you wouldn't even imagine, like, and for me, being in, um, school, they used to go get like, like books and take pictures of like porn, but now it's like accessible on people's phone. You gotta like set up blocks and stuff on your kids, cause it is accessible to anybody that holds that smartphone in their hand. But anyhow, so it seems like, it's like you have to work hard for your marriage. And some things maybe be, may be a deal breaker. But if you genuinely love somebody, y'all gotta come together and y'all gotta, y'all gotta talk that out and y'all gotta work that out. And especially if you have young kids these days. You wanna be in a household, and, and then you might have blended families. I have a blended family now. So it's like, it's sad because when you in the blended family, it's like the man, he like, he might have other children for other people, or the woman may have other kids for other people. And it's, um it's like everybody feels like they're entitled to be in those two people's relationship. And some things, um when you're going through things, you share things, you share things to your friends, you share things to your loved ones, and then you find yourself seeking advice from everybody. And everybody has a different opinion of how you should live your life. That's why it's very important for you to pray. That's why I say, um, a couple that prays together stays together. Because you have to have that, that after all the life-living, kids, friends running here trying to run businesses, maintain things, and then still have, you ain't hardly got time for yourself, but make a little time for yourself, then it's like, you're exhausted. So you need that time where you come together and you pray. But you have to realize that you don't let the sun go down on your wrath. You don't go to sleep angry at each other, you try to resolve it. And at the end of the day, it's not what anybody else wants, it's what you two agree. Cause y'all stood before God and y'all took those vows. Yep, like that. You two know in and out. Y'all know everything. So, don't be so quick, you know? Yeah, we can run down there and we can go get a divorce. Yeah, we can. But if you're still gonna parent with this person, and you're still gonna be around this person, give it some time, you know? And it's between y'all what you guys decide to forgive. And you can, your marriage can survive things. So, don't give up on your marriages so easily. But yeah, I was watching that show and I, I just felt like, you know, I felt like a couple, they gave up on their marriage a little, cause I can see the love from both sides. Yeah, I see, when I see her, I guess y'all know who I'm talking about. I'm talking about Bambi and Scrap. I thought they had a, a good marriage and a good relationship. I thought there were a lot of outside interferences, uh you know? And I don't wanna bash nobody or say, he should've did this, she should've did that. But I'm saying, I think y'all kinda gave up on y'all family a little too quick. Bam, I know he did some things, I don't know all the things that he did, but if he says that the stuff is not true about that girl, and he said he didn't have sex with her, and it's true, I mean, you could've forgave, you could've sat down with your husband about him even tempting himself or allowing somebody to be in his space like that. That's just my personal opinion. Yeah, it was foul, yeah, it was messed up, but y'all should've. And I know it's like other things too. And, um, Scrap, I know you love your mom, everybody, every man loves their mom, trust me. Or they should love their mom. But I think moms, even the moms, you should want to give your adult children their space. I have adult sons. And I just try to tell them, you know, look, I didn't choose the person for you. If that's the person you introduced me to, I know that's a person that you have strong feelings for, right? So I'm gonna respect that person because you love that person. I'm gonna respect that person as a person, as long as that person doesn't disrespect me. And even if that person does disrespect me, hopefully we can just get that back together if y'all continue to be together. Not alone if, if you were my daughter-in-law, or you know, if you were my son-in-law, let me just include everybody. You don't want to come in between that. Because you'll see that the person, they might have a tiff and tap, but then they wanna be together and they still love each other, and they love each other generally. And then when they share kids together, then it's like, you don't wanna be the reason to add any tension on that already strained marriage. Because marriages are not easy these days. If they were, the, the divorce rate and the high, you know, all the stuff that's going on, it wouldn't be so bad. So, that being said, as a mom, we shouldn't even wanna jump into our adult children's relationship like that unless somebody's doing something, putting their hands on somebody, putting somebody, or some crazy stuff like that. That's how I feel. And yes, your adult children may come and tell you things. But you have to really be like, yeah, and I love you, as long as thing, okay, that's who you chose. Now go, go on over there and love on your wife and raise your kids. All your kids. And that's how, I think that's how that should be wrapped up. But the man does have to stand up, and he does have to draw those boundaries. And I'm just giving, you know, how I feel, cause this is T Lee's Tea. But you don't have, it's not honoring your parents or loving your parent if you go be the head of your household and cling to your wife and raise your kids. That's being the man that they, that they married, or the man that they chose to be with and father our, our birthed kids with. Parents and friends, yeah, they're there for listening ears and they are there for advice, but they don't make the final decisions. And only take the heart, what you pray about and what you and your spouse discuss. But anyhow, I wish y'all all the best moving forward. That's the whole cast. I wish all of y'all the best. And let me talk about this. So, Florida. I, I was watching some stuff and they were showing like, um, different coasts and different parts of the beaches. And I remember a couple of years ago, it was lit in Florida. Um, I had actually went to Miami. And it was crowded, I mean, people were everywhere. But I see lately, there's a boycott on Florida. Y'all must be down there acting a fool. Yeah, down there acting ignorant, huh, Florida. Just acting pure D. You know when somebody was doing something, they had some, the, oh, and back in the day, they'll put pure D in front of it. Pure D, I mean, pure D crazy. Y'all pure D acting a fool over there, Florida. How dare ya? How dare ya? Y'all so, so, y'all ain't included. This y'all is a different kind of y'all. Yeah, I gotta come up with a, a thing for. How about darlings? Or loves? What, what y'all like to be called? Loves or darlings? Choose one. Drop it in the comment. Why you dropping in the comment? Like, share, and subscribe. So, Florida down there acting a pure D fool. So y'all wanna change the, um Hold up, hold up, pause for a second. This is what she's talking about.
The Florida Board of Education has approved a black history curriculum that apparently says slaves benefited from slavery, among other things.
Now let's get back to the tea. So, y'all wanna put in black history that black people, which were not black people. That's a whole nother podcast. That black people are, um, benefited from being slaves. Charlamagne gave y'all the donkey of the day, the blues clues, he, nah, he gave y'all the donkey of the day. I give you the pure D fool. Not pity the fool. I give you the pure D fool. You get the pure D fool award, Florida, which y'all praise yourselves. What? My people benefited from slavery. We gonna talk about the physical benefits we got from slavery? Or we gonna talk about the economical benefits we got from slavery? Or we gonna talk about the psychological benefits that we got from slavery? Where y'all wanna start? I got time today, Florida. So psychological. Let's start with the psychological benefits that my people received from being slaves. Let's get started. Uh, this is just purely from the top of my mind. Uh, from generations to generations to generations to generations to generations to present day. Let's use myself for an example. Do you know, from being from the south, just for me being from the south, I have witnessed, I've been a part of, my children has been a part of, people from my community has been a part of a systemic racism that has lasted this long and that psychologically affects my people up until this day. Yes, you flooded the communities with drugs, the same drugs that you used to convict them of, no matter how small or how great it was. Yes, we've been told all of our lives that we are lower class, we're the scum of the earth. Yes, we were treated like we were property, as it was once put in the law books. We were property. We was three-fourths of a person. Yeah. Still being treated like that to this day. Is it more covert, covert? No, it's just, it includes more people. Not only does it include us, but now it's starting to include the poor. Let me stay on subject. But those psychological effects, yeah, to this day. Even as a child, I used to have reoccurring nightmares of men in white hoods chasing my daddy's car. And me and my sisters looking out the back of the window, screaming, go daddy, go faster, go faster. That's sad. How many Caucasian children do you think ever had a thought or a notion that they could be shot by the police because they were Caucasian? Show of hands. Drop it in comment. How many? That's, that affects our children psychologically. And we know from history, the same history, that you guys don't wanna teach the correct history about our plots and our plight in history, in the world, from origination, from creation, who we are. But going through great links to cover it up. We are powerful. But psychologically, all these years of torture and all these things, not to mention, we ain't even get to the, to our people, what they went through psychologically to see their daddy hanging in front of his church. Or to know that the people that were having Ku Klux Klan meetings were having them in the churches and having them in the, in the, um, schools. So what god were you serving? Was he different? So psychologically, to see somebody hanging and everybody taking a picture in front of him, you can't drink out this water fountain, skeeter with water holes, lynch, not to mention the whippings and the beatings. That's the physical, can't, can't mix that up. But the psychological thing of just knowing, of, of knowing that if somebody lied on you, you will be beaten till you unrecognizable, didn't matter if you was a kid or not. Still hunting people in the woods today. Rashid. That's just a little bit of psychological. Now y'all wanna get to the physical? Oh, yeah, since I spilled on over into that tea. We're gonna talk about the physical things. We're gonna talk about the lynchings. We're gonna talk about the burning. We're gonna talking about the rapes. Oh, that's sexual. That's a whole nother one. Which by the way, you were convicted on the world stage for this. That brings me into another thing. Economically? We, we picked so much cotton, we raised so many billions and trillions of dollars for this cotton we picked. So we benefited? How did we benefit? Let's just go a little deeper down in this, let's go a little deeper down in this, this rabbit hole. How did, how did we benefit if you get over here? And we was already over here. So you take our land and you give it to your people. You misclassify us, the people that were already here. You misclassify us. And now you give all the money to the five-dollar Indians. The fake people. I want y'all to fill that in, cause I don't wanna be, I don't know what I can say or what I can't say. Who else got the money? Y'all got the money. Y'all got all the money. Y'all took the land, got the money. Then, you give it to all your people. Then, we gotta work ten times as hard to pay for our own stuff. Nah, we ain't benefit, the benefit was before you got here. The benefit was, all of this was free. All of this was ours. We knew how to love each other. We weren't at each other's throats. We weren't trying to kill our brothers and our sisters. We weren't doing all that. Who we learn that from? Y'all. So, who wants to say that we benefited from being slaves? I think the, the, the problem is still we rise. Slavery or no slavery, still we rise. There's none like us. Nowhere, nowhere, nowhere. I learned that people always hate something that deep inside, they know is the best. They know is the greatest. They hate, they hate that thing or those people the worst. Cause they see all the greatness. They love the football games, they love the basketball games. They love the way you dress, they love the way you sound. We got it all wrong as a people. The stage is set. When you do things that's against our nature, against who we are as a people, you allow the out to get in your head. Most definitely. I don't wanna go on and on and on, I don't know how long I've been, but I got a couple of things off my chest that I wanted to talk about. So I want y'all to have a blessed weekend. I ask you to say safe. And don't get, don't get, um, don't get all caught up when you do something good. Don't get all caught up when you do something good. Meaning, the fact that y'all prayed for that girl, she home. Nah, she messed up, whoop-de-whoop-de-whoop-de-whoop. We done messed up back in the day. I'm just recapping things. One of my favorite couples, and I had quite a few couples that I like. Oh, might I say this? Just because I named that couple, don't mean I don't have love for all of y'all. I'm telling y'all, I like the show. And when I was out there in Atlanta, I went to Rashida's store press. And, um, very nice, very nice, very nice. I liked Atlanta, it was really nice when I went down there. So, everybody stay safe, enjoy your weekend. Make this a, um, Make this a, um, do something y'all ain't never did before weekend. Oh, I did wanna say this, I did wanna say this. If you know that you're going somewhere. Where there's a lot of people that's gonna be there, and you're the person that has that temper. Got a quick temper, a half-triggered temper. Don't bring, don't bring nothing with you that you gonna run to your corner and go grab in a bad situation. Cuz you know, at those places, people step on people's shoes, people get drunk, people say things to you, girl. People do things like that. So if you know you got it on your mind, like, uh, somebody do this, no, don't even bring it. We're gonna do something different this weekend. It's about living, it's about having heaven on earth, it ain't about going out quick. Leaving your kids for no reason, you understand? Other than ignorance. That ain't our nature. When we kill our brothers and sisters, we going against our nature. You're gonna have people in every race that has, um. That has some kinda demonic things going on with them, that they're gonna do some crazy things. And those demonic things can come from ways of drugs, mental illness, or other reasons. And that don't have to happen either. But just to be out here taking people's life, looking for somebody, or somebody said something. We didn't sit up here and watched. People pillage through our neighborhoods, and people pillage through our people for no reason, other than the fact the color of their skin. People don't even wanna march, let alone do nothing. So why would you wanna slide on your brother, your sister? And brothers and sisters, quit doing things to people. Quit doing, take accountability for yourselves. Y'all be peaceful. Later, darlings or loves, whichever one you prefer.